Time for 5:30, I call this meeting in the Pittsburgh City Commission to order. Commissioner Monique Murnan is not in attendance tonight, she'll be joining us by phone. We stand for the invocation given by Bishop Walderson, White House.
Our Father God, we thank you today for your blessings upon us. We ask you to bless our commission, the shepherds of our community. We ask that, oh God, that you would give them the patience of Job and the wisdom of Solomon. We ask you to bless everyone that come before you today in business, and we thank you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Question of the meeting tonight is public input. Is there anyone out there that would like to come forward, state their name and address, and speak on any subject they care to? Seeing none, I close the public input part, move to consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed for discussion? Are none, roll call vote.
Moved to approve.
A second.
Gray.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ketterman.
Aye.
Munsell.
Aye.
Murnan.
Aye.
Public hearing, we've scheduled a public hearing tonight to 2015 budget amendment. The city advertised for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, December 8th, 2015, at 5:30 PM in the city commission room, located in law enforcement center located at 201 North Pine, to hear any questions, answer objections of taxpayers related to the proposed amending amendment using funds in the 2015 budget. I-
Mayor, city commissioners, I mentioned this, a couple meetings called, I'd be bringing some budget amendments that you're in on three of our funds, and that's what this is about. Now, it's like you're in bookkeeping, clean up, so we don't have any state budget violations. We had three funds, the debt service fund, special parks and recreation fund, and the section eight housing fund. The debt service fund is because we did some bond refinancing where it increased expenditures and revenues, but the budget goes by the expenditure side, so it was more than what we had originally adopted. So I had to raise that to allow for that. The special parks and recreations, due to increased revenue on the liquor tax that was received overall, was estimated, it was more than what the state estimated we were going to get this year, so I had to raise that too, because that's all gets expended out. And the section eight housing fund needs to be raised, because we've actually leased up more houses this year in the town, so it was more than what we anticipated when we started the year with. So you just need to open this up to a public hearing, and then if there's no comments or anything, you close the public hearing, and then vote to approve as amended.
I open this portion up to hear and answer any objections to this budget amendment from the public. Anybody would like to come forward and state their name and address, and any objections they have. Seeing none, I close the public input, and is there a motion to approve this amendment?
So moved.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We have a special presentation tonight, Girl Scout Project. Terry Blessent will explain the 2015 Girl Scouts service project that benefited the city of Pittsburgh by adding three benches made out of recycled lids to various locations around the city.
Mayor, commissioners, thank you for giving us this opportunity to bring Terry Blessent and these fifth and sixth grade Girl Scouts to you to explain the project, service project they did for our community. They spent a lot of time on this project, and hopefully it's something that they can continue in the future, but we're just very proud of the work they did, so I'm going to turn it over to Terry to talk to you about it.
Hi, I'm Terry Blessent, and I am the troop leader of troop 61018 here in Pittsburgh, Kansas. We started this project back in August of 2014, thought we would gather some unrecyclable caps, plastic caps and lids, send them to Evansville, Indiana, and get a bench. We needed 400 pounds for one bench, so we thought, we'll do one, and we started, when we started, we thought, you know, it'll take us a long time to get 400 pounds. So we started, and we had 400 pounds in not very long of a time period. So we decided to keep going, we stopped at three benches, because we were out of room and overwhelmed. So here is, we had to wash the caps before we could actually take them, so here's just a few pictures of the girls washing the caps. It was a long process, some of the people would wash them, some of them not so much. Here's another picture of some more washing. This here, somebody graciously donated their enclosed trailer for us to travel with these caps. We went to Evansville, Indiana with them, five girls went with us. Here we are unloading them in Evansville. The girls helped, it was pouring down rain, they didn't care, they got out there anyways. So here are the five girls that went. The two gentlemen are the two from the company in Evansville, and then the benches up on the top right are the ones that we actually brought home. Here is the park at Schlinger, which is where we would like to put, I'm assuming, since there's a pad now, we are definitely going to put one there. The second one, we're unsure of exactly where, but then the third one, Harvey Dean actually came, the girls went to Harvey, he was looking to place a bench with his coal buckets and his football, so he decided that he would like to partner with us, so he paid for his bench that we will place here. Do you have any questions? Would you like me to introduce, should introduce the girls? This is Ellie Clutter, Beth Blessent, Catherine Kirby, Paige Kirby, and Grace Cunningham.
I'd just like to thank you for all the hard work you girls did, and providing something that's going to benefit, and really, truly beautiful project, taking trash, heavy wealth, and turning it into something useful. So thank you for your hard work.
Yes, thank you very much.
I've got another cap there, if you want to-
Somebody go get it.
Do you have any other projects planned?
At this point, we do not. We want to get this one completely finished first, before we, this is just the beginning of the girls' projects, they will have, this is called the bronze award for them, they have to do a project that serves the community, and this definitely will serve the community, I believe. I mean, they will, people take their kids to the park all the time, they'll have a place to sit, but we don't really have another one in mind yet.
Well, benches are expensive, so on behalf of all the taxpayers, thank you, because they're critical, and we can use as many of them we can get, and those are beautiful benches, so great job.
Yes, thank you very much, girls.
Consider the following, A, an ordinance number G-1243. Consider approving of ordinance number G-1242, creating Article 5, Section 62, dash 51, 462, and 156, in the chapter 62 of the Pittsburgh City Code, for the purpose of creating the downtown advisory board, and determining, determining the membership duties and functions of said downtown advisory board. Jeff.
Mayor, commissioners, I'm here representing the downtown district, asking you for your approval of this ordinance. The ordinance, as you said, would create a downtown advisory board, and I'll just hit some of the highlights. It would be a seven-member board, one member would represent the hospitality industry, one would represent the retail industry, one would be a property owner, and one would represent, and the downtown district, one would live in the downtown district. The other three would be members at large that have a vested interest in the downtown district. We set the terms, the at-large members would serve one term, the four other members would serve a two-year term, and then they would rotate off. There would be an appointment of a chairperson, and obviously a vice chair, with the city manager's approval, I would serve as his designee, as an ex-official member of the board, and take care of the minutes. No member would serve more than a three-year term. The duties of the advisory board would be to represent the interests of the downtown property owners, residents, and merchants, and they'll establish committees, as they see necessary, to work in the downtown area. The board would meet at least quarterly, if not, if not more often, if needed, and the downtown advisory board would present an annual report in March of what's gone on for the year, and they would present that at a work session with the commissioners. I would like to thank the downtown committee for their input, this has been a process that's been going on for a few months now, and I think we've, we've pretty much got it ironed out the way we think it would work best for the city. I would like to thank for the city and the downtown. I would like to thank Jay Byers, Kim Vogel, and city attorney Henry McGinnity for their work on the ordinance. Hopefully, after it's approved this evening, it will be printed in the newspaper on Friday, and then we've devised a application for the members, and we would present that to those that are interested, and they would have until January the 4th to apply for a board position, get those to Tammy, and then we'll bring it back to you for your vote on however many that we might receive. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I've-
For those who might be, for those who might be watching, what is the, what is the expanded role of this group going to be versus the other committees and the other groups that have been formed from a downtown perspective?
Well, this will be, this will be the group.
The city's advisory board.
Right. We've had, in the past few months, we've had different committees that have worked together on different projects, we've had an infrastructure committee, we've had a marketing committee, an events committee, those will, will hopefully work into, well, I know they will work into this, but this advisory board will determine what committees need to be chosen that will best direct the downtown, and I would assume a lot of those that I mentioned will continue. One thing I did mention, one board member will be responsible for each of the committees, so hopefully it will be an ongoing effort, or will be an ongoing effort, to help, you know, bring new ideas into the downtown, and kind of get all the downtown merchants, you know, working together, and we think this is something that's been needed, and we would ask for your, for your approval.
So this would be similar to like the airport advisory board?
Correct. Well, I'm not sure the functions of the airport board, but-
No, Commissioner Gray is exactly right, I mean, that's, I guess, his question's probably similar to what I think maybe I'm thinking, can you take a minute, and you may need Jay's help, I don't know, and let's talk about, just recap for everybody, there's been a lot in the last year and a half as far as noise ordinances, overlay districts, just kind of lay it out, I mean, who, so there's a, is this board going to oversee everything? How's the overlay district working? We've got you as a downtown coordinator, I mean, we've had a pretty significant effort to get organized downtown, maybe, isn't this the final piece?
Yes, yes, it is.
And I think my question was, was just related almost more than, just for structural purposes, because I think there's been many downtown groups, maybe many is exaggerating, but there's been several downtown groups over the years that have been formed and gone away, or reformed, and, and so, just for those who might be watching, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear what this board would be, who it would replace, and what its function would be, is more, but you are correct, there's been a lot of changes over the last year and a half, so I don't know if you could summarize that for those who might be watching.
Well, I mean, to answer your question, Commissioner Gray, what it would replace really is what necessarily, what's been working, but we've, we've felt for a long time, until we're a recognized board with the city, we don't feel like we're going anywhere. We, we've had committees that, that work in conjunction with the downtown, in marketing, and in event planning, but we really felt like a structure, we needed to, to be a board, recognized by the city, to be able to make, if, if there are changes in the downtown, obviously there's some issues with some buildings downtown, I know there'll be an infrastructure committee, which will really look on, on how we can keep the facades the way they are, keep the historic part of the downtown, you know, going the way it is. What we did about a year ago was pass the ordinance, the overlay ordinance, it really gave us a direction of the size of the downtown district. It goes from 14th Street to Rouse, one block to the west, and two blocks to the east. So now we have a defined area of what the downtown district is, and this really, in my mind, is the final piece, to where we can begin to get organized, get committees together, and start functioning to, to improve different areas of the downtown. Now, I don't know if that's, if that's answered your question.
No, no, I think, I think it provides the explanation I'm looking for. I mean, I, I kind of already knew the background, but I just wanted to make sure that, that folks at home aren't confused about, oh, it's just another downtown group, it's more than that.
This will be, this will be the downtown group. The seven-member board with, with the different, it just couldn't be all seven people at large, we wanted a retail person, we wanted a property owner downtown, we wanted someone that lives downtown, and then we wanted someone from the hospitality industry, so, so we could all work together to make downtown what we'd like it to be.
I appreciate it.
Just a question on terms, one and two-year terms?
Well, the, the at-large members will serve a one-year term, the other members will serve a two-year term, after the one-year term for the at-large members rolls off, then they will be reappointed to a two-year term, but you can only serve three consecutive two-year terms.
Okay, that's the question, is?
Yes.
I don't want to run out of people.
We, we want, we want a changeover, we want people to, you know, have the opportunity to serve, so, and, and of course, if someone, for one whatever reason, you know, wouldn't be able to fulfill their term, we come back to you and suggest appointees.
Okay, thank you, for the explanation.
Any further questions? Do you have any people in mind to be on the committee yet, or is it too early?
No, I think there's, there's been a core group of people that have really helped me with the downtown district, and I would assume, and I, I don't want to give you their names, but I would assume a lot of those people would be interested in, in being a member, because they have been there from the beginning, since I've been on board, and I think they would want to continue that, and feel like now they have some real, some real input that they can give to the group.
Sort of as a follow-up to Michael's question, you had mentioned the infrastructure thing kind of being on your radar for the future, are there any other sorts of things that, like the group has kind of come up with preliminarily, that they're thinking about?
You know, I think marketing the downtown is one, is one item that I know people are interested in, also events downtown, and events downtown don't necessarily need to be on Broadway. Events downtown can be on Pine Street, can be, you know, so we're not having to maybe continually block off the downtown area, but there's, there's a lot, there are several people that are interested in, in different events downtown, that can help bring people in the downtown district.
I'll just step in here, there are a couple of benefits to having an organized group, a recognized organized group, that's been recognized by the commission. They're eligible for more grant funds, we're, we're more likely to get grant funds potentially, we're looking at grant funds for, for planning, for general planning for the, for the downtown area, redevelopment, potential redevelopment grants, so, and historic preservation grants, a lot of those things that we're more likely to get with an, with an organized group. So there's, there's definitely those, those pieces. We're also looking at taking that downtown overlay, and identifying particular areas within that downtown as venues for activities, like, obviously, Europe Park is a good example of that, that's a good example of a, of a venue that we could identify, and if, if people come to us with suggestions for activities, we can say, well, we have these venues downtown, and based on the kind of activity they're looking for, perhaps we could identify a particular venue for that activity, say, well, what's your, in other words, what you're, what you're talking about, or planning, looks like it fit really well in the Pritchett Pavilion, for example, and we can kind of organize it better that way. That way, we can, when, when we need to provide resources to support that activity, we'd already have a plan, you know, it's not ad hoc every time, you know, we know, if we're going to have an event at, at Pritchett Pavilion, we need this, 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 and this, all right, and that plan could just be executed, without a whole lot of reinventing the wheel every time. So these are just some of the things that, that having a more organized group allows us to do.
I might, Mayor, I might just add one thing, we, we applied for the Smart Growth Grant, we were one of, one of seven out of 68, I think, that had applied for it. We received a phone call, we had a meeting, but unfortunately, we were informed last week that we didn't receive it. The good thing is, they're applying for additional money in 2016, and they asked us to be patient, because they really appreciated the application that we sent in, and felt like, and they said we were on their shortlist, so they said, be patient, and hopefully in 2016, they would be able to, to maybe come and, and help us with the, with that grant.
That's a plan.
Planning grant.
That was for all cities in the United States, wasn't it?
Yes, yes.
But that's, that's pretty good to be on that shortlist.
Another questions or comments, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, approving the ordinance, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed, same time, motion carries. Plink Resurfacing Project, the Kansas Department of Transportation has announced approval of funding for the Plink Resurfacing Project on K-126, Fourth Street, KCS overpass east to Freaking Highway, for fiscal year 2017, based on an estimate for the total project cost of $610,340, with the state's participation being 50% of the actual total participating project cost. Cameron.
This is a similar type project to what we had just completed this year, running from the bypass up to Pine Street, this would take it from the overpass out east to Freaking Highway.
Questions for Cameron?
I don't have any. I'll move to approve.
Been moved and seconded, to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries.
Thank you.
Phone system upgrade, staff is requesting authorization to accept the quote submitted by Alexander Open System, ASO, in the amount of $98,712.69 to upgrade the city's telephone system.
Mayor, commissioners, we purchased the current phone system that the city uses, this is a citywide telephone system, we installed it in 2007, we have, since then, not upgraded the system, or maintained the licensing for it, it's a cost-saving measure, that was done. What that means is that if we have a problem with it, or something goes wrong, we, we cannot call the company to help us fix that, all right? Now, you know, obviously, the staff here has been maintaining it, and, and we've been able to keep it up and running, but it is a, we run into numerous scares, that, you know, we obviously still need a telephone system, we're, we're not beyond that yet, we may, we may have some options in the future, but right now, we have, we need a phone system for almost everything we do. So it's, this is something that we've been kind of identified, we identified this several years ago, we've been trying to put aside some money for it, and identify funds for it, this is an unbudgeted item, which is why we brought it up on the, on the consider agenda here, but we, we feel we have enough resources now, we've, we've pared down the contract to what we, what we need. This contract, this particular contract will provide software to upgrade all of the licenses we have, will provide for some equipment, some switches, and routers, and things behind the scene we need, as well as services to upgrade. There's some process that you have to go through, you have to upgrade all of the switches, there's a pretty involved process you have to go through to upgrade your telephone system, and that's what, that's what all of, all of this is for. It's not provide, it's not actually buying any additional telephones, all right? The telephones we have now will actually work with, with the upgraded system, but there's some things that we haven't been able to do, because we haven't been able to upgrade anything, we haven't been able to add any services, we've been running out of voicemail boxes, so we've actually, you know, when, when a new person comes on, and we need an additional voicemail box, we actually have to remove someone, or put them in a group, that's kind of what we've been doing, so this will take care of all of those kind of shortcomings, so that's, that's what this is.
But what is the, what is the plan going forward, so we don't end up another seven, eight years down the road with no upgrades? I mean, are we looking at what the long-term solution is for that?
Well, the, the solution is to budget and add, and include license upgrades in the future. What's in front of you provides for three years' worth of licensing, okay? At that point, we're really going to have to start, after that three-year period, we'll have to start looking at, do we want to change out some more equipment? We'll, we'll reevaluate the phone system at that time, this is going to be good for three years, and, and after that, we will add budgetary item to maintain the licensing.
Did you bid this out, Jay, or could you explain?
No, this is, this is actually purchased off of a state contract. Alexander Open Systems works through the state, they're, it's, they're, this is Cisco equipment, Cisco has a contract with the state of Kansas, and we, we can buy off that, it's all bid out, as all the state contracts are for these sorts of things, and so we can be guaranteed we're getting a, a good bid rate on all of these, all the equipment and services.
So is this a continuation, then, of the existing service that we had, like, simply an upgrade to the present system?
That's exactly, yes, it would be considerably more expensive if we replaced it.
Do we have any idea what it's going to cost in three years, to budget what's necessary to keep it from falling into this state again?
I think it'll probably be in the nature of $20,000.
Just a normal percentage?
License upgrade for software.
That's, that'll be three years?
That'll be every year.
That'll be every year.
That'll be every year, at that point, it'll be every year. I have to go back and, I can't, it's hard for me to estimate what it's going to be in years, but that's, that's the neighborhood.
And that's three years away.
We're also going to be buying phones, but, but with current budget money, we'll be buying new phones, we won't, you know, that won't be addition, that'll be additional expense.
The three-year licensing fee, does that cover the maintenance and stuff that goes along with it?
It does, it does, and, and the key being, we can call somebody and say, we're having a problem, and they'll get online with us and fix it.
When do you plan on, if this is approved, to get this to-
Well, January, we'll start, and I think it's a six, did we say, about six weeks?
Yeah, it'd be about a six week. The project runtime's about six weeks, of technician from AOS, and other skilled vendors coming onsite, so the whole process takes about six weeks, about three weeks' worth of pre-planning, scheduling before that, so we're looking completion date by Valentine's Day, but we ought to be starting in January.
And realize, every building we have that has phone service, has to have a separate switch, and that has to be programmed, and that's how we do the, that's how 911 works, so when you make a call, they, that the desk here knows where you're calling from, so all of those have to be programmed with the 911 system, so it's a little bit involved, the processes, multiple locations.
No new numbers?
Oh, no, no, there's, there are going to be physically no changes for the individual user.
The citizens, nothing will change on their end?
No, no, thanks, thanks, no, no, no changes for the citizens, it's just behind-the-scenes stuff, like most of the stuff I do, so.
Any further questions for Joe?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same time, thank you, Jay.
Thanks, sir.
Are there any non-agenda reports or requests?
We just have one, I believe. Cameron?
Thank you. I just wanted, again, to invite the commission out to a ribbon-cutting ceremony out on Quincy Street this Thursday, December 10th, at 9:00 AM. Will be parking folks over at the Pizza Hut there beside there, we've got some accommodations for overflow parking on the closed portion of Quincy, we'll be setting up a stage there, and the general public will kind of congregate there, right in front of the railroad crossing there in the closed portion of Quincy. Quincy itself will be closed between Broadway and the railroad tracks, and we'll start putting traffic control out prior to that, probably about 7, 8 o'clock, start getting that ruled out, but definitely invite the commission, and invite any of the public and media that would like to attend.
That's at 9:00, right, Cameron?
Yes, 9:00 AM.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one thing, I would like to recommend city staff to provide any assistance to the county, if they pursue a countersuit against Cherokee County regarding casino laws.
Do we need?
What do you mean by that?
Do we need three people to-
Well, you know, if they, they ask for something from the city on their countersuit, I would
think, I'd anything they ask us to do.
What if they're asking us to join-
What if they're asking us to join it? I'd just soon get commission approval to move. I think, do we have, what kind of grounds would we have for the lawsuit anyway?
Well, is, is this something that we can discuss in an executive session?
Yes, yes.
That would be my preference.
Yes, we will, we will, if it comes up, we will schedule an executive session, and we will, we will be helpful, and we will bring it to you, and we will decide.
Yeah, because we have no idea if this is going to happen or not with the county, but I would...
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Entertain the motion this year, John.
I'll move.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same time. You are adjourned.